Six o'clock.
All right, half six oh one.
Yeah.
Your clock's wrong.
My watch is five fifty-nine.
Yeah.
So my computer's wrong.
Yeah, I have five.
Something's wrong.
Okay, let's say six o'clock.
Split the difference?
Split the difference. Oh.
Come on in.
Thanks. Kelly, your mic is on.
Have a seat.
Just make sure it gets on before you call.
Hi Chloe, how are you doing?
Real good.
Good.
Is everybody all right? You all right?
Howdy.
Hi there.
Hi Carmen.
Hi.
You're good to go?
Yeah.
My pleasure to call to order the first council meeting of two thousand and twenty-three, even though the agenda says two thousand and twenty-two. And hope everybody had a wonderful holiday season and wish everybody a happy new year. We have no delegations. We have the minutes of the December fifth regular council meeting. Could I have a motion to adopt as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. And the minutes of the special council meeting, December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried, and the minutes of the December twenty-second special council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Little competition going on in my life. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Any discussion is arising from the minutes? Hearing none. Economic Development, Councillor Dubois?
Nothing at this time.
Budget and Administrative Services, myself? Nothing at this time. Bylaw and Policy Review, Councillor Ranta?
Yes, I have another one.
Excuse me, I need to excuse myself because it's a little old to my heart.
No problem.
We, I, I move the motion as on the agenda of the council group and in state policy C dash nine, staff pay for fire department duties.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to state that the policy on the agenda reflects the discussion and is correct in my opinion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. Onto item two, Councillor Ranta?
Uh, item two.
So Peters come back?
Oh, good idea. That's for the best.
Come on back.
This won't take long, did it?
So item two, policy C dash ten, technology and cybersecurity policy. I believe that this policy is on the agenda for the purposes of discussion of printing of closed meeting agendas for council members. So, but I'm not sure that the motion that I prepared requires any discussion of the policy. So I'll move that administration will provide council members with a printed copy of closed meeting agendas if requested and that the printed copies will be returned.
Second.
Any discussion? Administrator.
For clarity, they would be returned like at the end of the meeting or when would their return date be?
How about the end of the term?
That's kind of difficult to track, right? Just keeping track of how many different agendas are printed over term.
What would you recommend?
I know that some other places, when they've done printed copies, what they do is they have access to them here within the building so that they're accessible in like a binder or something like that. And then they can be returned at the end. Like basically, they'd never be taken off the property, but they would stay inside the council or inside the municipal office.
Okay, so let's, let's say.
Councillor Ranta?
Okay, the intention of my motion is in order to facilitate the study of the closed meeting agendas on paper, in paper form. Where in the possession of that council member, keeping them safe, and that they would be returned to administration. And I think that if there was a problem with the timeframe that they would be returned, that that would be a discussion between the council member, the mayor, and the administration. And if it needs to come back to council, it could become, come back to council. But I do think that the intention of the motion is to provide council members with paper copies that they would keep safe if they require a paper copy, not necessarily to keep it within the building. So that's, I just want to clarify that. And that I feel uncomfortable putting a return deadline on it, other than in a reasonable timeframe, I guess. I don't know if someone else has a suggestion about what the timeframe would be.
Councillor Dubois?
I'm okay with part of the agendas being returned at the end of the meeting or they're staying in the building. I'm okay with that. I'm a little concerned if they do go out, leave the building, because at that point, there's still responsibility for them. They need to be tracked, all that sort of stuff. So I, I think we have to come up with something that would address some of those concerns around the safety of, of what's going on. I know on previous councils, you know, we were responsible for destroying them. Most times, it was always just left in the village office and shredded, but sometimes they ended up at home for whatever reasons. But I appreciate what you're saying. It's, you want to be able to study them, maybe not necessarily in council chambers.
Councillor Peters?
I, I understand that concern. I have no problem with the, with the online version and doing it that way. But I don't see a need, if you need to prepare with it, I don't see a need to have it after the end of the meeting, if you've already done the preparation and the discussions happen. Because technically, we're not supposed to have any notes even that leave the building. So, you know, in.
It, it, sorry. Administrator Dubois? From the risk management side of things, it's a, it's a big concern when it comes to confidentiality. It can very easily be unintentional that a night of his life is in a place that there shouldn't be and somebody sees it. And just looking at some of the neighbor in communities, I know most of them don't let it leave the building. They have different password controls for how they access it on the computer and that sort of thing. I, I, from the risk management side, accessibility and use within these four walls makes a lot of sense, but leaving the confines of these four walls, or even if it's, here's your paper copy, but I need it back at the end. Because what we did do.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, previous council for a period of time was making copies. They were getting the physical copies, but then at the end of that closed meeting that the agendas were distributed for, they were kept in a file here within the building. And then, say, two months after the fact, if you want to see those documents again, you can just come in and ask and we give you the binder of everything that you've done. And the binders are specific to each member of council. That's how we've done it.
Yeah, I know. I, I certainly, with my style of management of the affairs, I certainly prefer to have a paper agenda. So if we can find a way to provide a paper copy of the in-camera agenda to me prior to the meeting, so I can review it like on Friday or something for a Monday meeting, so I can review it at home, I would prefer that. And certainly on previous councils, I'm not aware of any leakage of in-camera information. And David, I've worked with you and Wendy in the past, and I don't think there was any in-camera information that was distributed from the council over four years.
I think there's been evidence in other communities where that's happened. I'm not sure if that happened. When Sue was on there, I, I can't comment because I don't know what the agendas were. But I think it's just in the, in terms of making sure we're doing our due diligence, I think it's important that the paper copies stay within the, the village office. Excuse me, within the village office. And so I, I'm okay with having a binder here for, for council members to review them at their leaving. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, they're also available digitally on our laptops at any time. So I can, I appreciate that. But generally speaking, most of the in-camera agendas that I've seen are not that sort of long and horrendous, that it's that inconvenient to read them online. And if you need to do further research or whatever, to have to come in and get a paper copy and just work on it inside the office. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So where are we, Councillor Ranta? Your motion was?
As, as original, that I moved that administration will provide council members with a printed copy of closed meeting agendas if requested and that the printed copies be returned. That's, I don't think, been amended at the end.
No, not that I'm aware of. So any further discussion on the motion?
I.
Councillor Peters?
I would like to see them returned and kept on file here within the notes that we have.
Huh?
Yeah.
Rather than have it in, in.
Councillor Ranta?
If that's an amendment, I support the amendment. I'll second the amendment.
Okay, I would move that we amend the motion to add that the printed copies be returned to the CAO at the conclusion of the meeting.
Is there a secondary? Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none on the amendment, all those in favor, opposed, carried, and on the motion as amended? Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you.
And the next motion is item three, which should say three possibly.
Yes.
Policy D dash four, snow and ice control policy. I move that council bring policy D dash four to the table for discussion, and I do have a motion prepared. I'll second it.
So.
So I'm moving, I guess, how it works is.
Yeah, ju- just bring it.
Can I move my motion?
Just bring it to the table. It's on the table now, the policy D four. And do you have a motion? Yes, Councillor Ranta?
Okay, I move that council directs the Policy and Bylaws Committee to review policy D dash four to reflect current practices and to add removal of snow clearing on all municipal sidewalks, using a system that ensures safety of pedestrians, particularly schoolchildren, as a priority.
So you're referring it to committee?
One second.
Any discussion? I, I guess what I would like to see also is Quartz Road and Collins Road included in the priority one roads within the village. I see we've got all the roads that have steep hills on them in here. But what our concept was with the sidewalk structure is that you have a cross of sidewalks going from up the hill down to the school and from either end of the community to the middle. And I think it would be prudent if we could find a way to include Quartz Road and Collins Road in the priority one snow clearing, because you're driving around anyway.
I, I would move that amendment to the motion I just made.
Second. Any discussion? Councillor Dubois?
I think that would be something for the committee to review and.
Yeah, yeah.
Bring back with, as opposed to.
The motion is necessary. Yeah, I don't know that it needs to be a motion.
Okay.
Yes. Councillor Ranta?
I'll withdraw.
And no problem. Is that okay with your secondary? Good. So on the motion then to refer the snow and ice control policy to committee, and I'm sure they'll come back with a recommendation to council. Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. Onto public works, Councillor Debert? Okay, healthcare and protective services, Councillor Ranta?
We have a scheduled committee meeting in about ten days, and we'll have a report following that.
Thank you. Emergency management, Councillor Peters?
I have something at this time.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councillor Ranta?
We're also having a Parks and Recreation committee on that same day, so.
Councillor Dubois?
Maybe we could direct staff when they prepare the minutes for the meeting to include those staff dates?
The next scheduled meeting day?
Yeah, in the, in the meetings. We don't have it here, but just. Thank you.
Thank you. Landfill Advisory Committee, nothing to report. TNRD, an intergovernmental liaison. Next meeting is on the sixteenth or something, I think, January. Cass Creek Community Fund, Councillor Dubois?
Need to report at this time.
Thank you. Staff report, Canada Summer Jobs Program, page twenty-eight.
I can bring it up on here too, if you like.
I think the recommendation is that council directs staff to apply for two Canada summer job positions and recommend a wage rate?
That is correct. So move.
I'll move it.
What's your wage rate?
A wage rate seventeen.
Seventeen sixty-one?
Yeah, that's what it says in.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Councillor Ranta?
Oh, go ahead.
I just have a question. And the people who consider maybe you want to give a few words on that. I just wonder why, is this mandated to seventeen sixty-one per hour or can we pay them at the union rate?
There, it's, it was supposed to read seventeen thirty-one, which is the union rate, yes. We can, we have to pay at least the union rate of seventeen thirty-one. Seventeen sixty-one was a typo on my part. But yeah, this was just meant to give an example that if we're, if we're paying them seventeen sixty-one, it costs us about four thousand dollars a person for their whole eight week period after the deductions that the grant would give us, because the grant funds fifty percent of minimum wage. So when you factor that in, it would cost us four thousand dollars. And if they were eighteen fifty, four thousand four hundred, nineteen fifty, it's just meant to give a comparison. I, it's hard to say if wage rate was the defining factor as to why we didn't get a lot of applications last year. But we are competing against a lot of other places in the area that do apply for this funding. That, most of these other applicants are similar to us. They apply for multiple, they get fifty to seventy-five percent of what they ask for, and then they only fill fifty to seventy-five percent of what they get, just because there's, there's a little bit of a, there's not a lot of people that are able to fill the role. We have a little bit of a deficiency with young people that are looking to ensure the working workforce.
Councillor Peters?
What's the age requirement for it? Like, what's the minimum age or is there a age range that?
No, they, do you know offhand?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Thirty.
Yeah, thirty. They have to be a student.
Yeah, when we advertised last time.
Oh, there you go.
When we advertised last time and had no one apply, how was it, how was it published?
We published it via social media in a few different ways. And then we also put posters at the school.
At the school, okay.
Yeah, I, I guess I am feeling a certain reluctance to adjust the wage rate to something other than what is in the union agreement, because I think it sets a precedent that may lead other union members to feel as if we're in the midst of negotiations, even though we've already got a collective agreement. So I think we should be focused on paying what the union agreement says and not going with some of these other suggestions.
So the union rate is seventeen thirty-one?
Seventy thirty.
So to defeat the motion, it could be re, brought up again, that would not.
Or amended to seventeen thirty.
Okay, I would move that we amend the motion on the table to reflect seventeen thirty-one instead of seventeen sixty-one, which is the current union contract amount.
Second. Any discussion on the amendment? On the amendment, all those in favor, opposed. On the motion as amended, any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. Onto the. Oh, thank you CFO Martini for preparing this list. Very interesting. The only thing that caught my eye was Bree Contracting, whatever it is, quarter million dollars or something. What are they doing for us?
Bree Contracting is a primary contractor that is working at the water treatment plant to do the grant that we.
Project.
Yeah, the big project that we're working on down there.
Oh, yeah.
And everything's just kind of finishing up there. We reached ninety percent completion recently, and so stuff is starting to, the big checks are starting to move.
Yeah.
And just for, for clarification, that was a hundred percent.
Thank you. Appreciate that and appreciate the good work. Chief Financial Officer Martini?
Thank you.
On website statistics?
Should be.
Oh, pardon me.
There, isn't there a motion to receive and file?
I'll move that we receive and file the report for CFO Martini.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'll second, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion now?
Yes. So this was just, this was just the checks for the month of December, correct. So this is going to be something that we can expect to see on a monthly basis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. Website statistics?
Need to receive and file the report?
Second.
Any discussion? Councillor Ranta?
I have a discussion. I'll just, there was a question about the village having the council members' profiles and bios and like other information on the website. And I wanted an opportunity to discuss that, so I'll take this opportunity if that's okay.
Yes, carry on, Councillor Ranta.
So I, I do think that it would be beneficial to have council profiles on there, the biographical information, you know, where they, what, you know, by, like, just basic biographical information based on whatever the council member wanted to put on there. However, I do, I, I do not really support the council members, or really any candidates, council members, putting information on positions that they hold in viewpoint, political viewpoints. The reason I, I hold that view is because I think the role of the village in having a website and the role of the village overall when it comes to political viewpoints is to support the council as a collective whole, rather than hosting comments that they have no control over, that, that may create opportunity for, for kind of a disruption in the cohesiveness of the council. I think that there are other locations and avenues that councillors have if they want to share those types of commentary. So I would, I would just recommend myself that, that the biographical information be included if desired, but maybe not political information.
That's how I saw it. Is it, who am I? Like, sort of just saying, you know, I was born here, I lived there, I did, worked here, and ran the council, you know, whatever I ran the council. And that's kind of how I foresaw that information.
Any further discussion on the motion to receive and file the report from CAO chair?
Well, thank you for the clarification on the point. I just, I did see, I did see in that request that went out to us, and it was probably not a public thing, I did see the, you know, Antwyu Ran comment, and I just thought, ooh, you know, maybe I ran on a platform to en- ensure that all village facilities were painted purple, right? And maybe I want to change my mind later on. And it's going to be very difficult if that's posted on the website and it's my, you know, it's the organization I'm now a part of. So I, I just think that the biographical information is, is completely usable, but I just thought it shouldn't be Antwyu Ran. That's why I brought this up today. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure council members will take that into consideration when they're preparing their, their summary or biography or whatever you want to call it. On the motion to receive and file, any further discussion, Councillor Co-Chair?
I was just going to mention, because I know a lot of times members of the public don't see this information. It's, it's interesting to look at. I brought it up on the screen, kind of what people are looking at on our website. I found it quite informative, running this report at the end of the year, because it's for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-two. And you can see that a lot of people, obviously, our homepage is the thing that people see the most. Elections were quite popular, job opportunities were quite popular. Things only get posted there as they're available. But considering that it almost had as many page views and independent people clicking on it as all the election coverage, that's impressive. So that we know when we're putting up things like the Canada Summer Jobs Post, it's worthwhile to put things in that section. And then, like I had mentioned to the members of council, currently, we don't have anything in the council section, but it's one of the most clicked things, that and agendas and bylaws. So from the operational perspective, I look at this for looking at development of the platform that is our website. These are the areas that we should be focusing on. These are where people go to seek information. These are the things that they're looking for. So if we build out those specific areas, yeah, just kind of gives us a priority list. And all the other interesting stuff, like Facebook posts, we've had some very successful Facebook posts. And it's, it's very worthwhile information for people that want to know a little bit more about how we keep track of things. So when people are, when people are seeing our stuff and what's kind of influencing, well, why is it that they always put stuff on Facebook? Or why do they put stuff on the website, not here? Why do they use Facebook instead of YouTube and things like that? It gives you information as to why. So that's all.
Thank you. Councillor Ranta?
I do still see some folks and hear of some folks that aren't as engaged technologically as others. And I think they're, they're, what I would be more, almost more curious about is how, how the engagement is with people that aren't on technology as much as others. Because we, we do know that the engage, the communications challenge is, is multifaceted and the communication needs to be multifaceted. And I kind of, I, I think we need to remember that there's still a value in the good old fashioned newsletter and the good old fashioned paper in the mailbox and other posters and things like that, the old, the old style, I guess, as well as the, the technological aspects, which I kind of enjoy as well myself. So I, I think that we, we need to remember to communicate in the, like, non-technological way as well. And I know, I know that we're going to be working on a communication plan or communication plan development policy or something like that, in order to ensure that we're, we're balanced in our approach as a community organization. Because I, I do think that not everybody is online, not everybody has internet, not everybody is using phones and computers, so. So it'd be good to see the stats on that as well, that's all.
Thank you. On the motion then to receive and file the report, any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. Information correspondence, there's three items, A, B, C, could I have a motion to receive and file those three information correspondence items?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried. And the final email from Chloe Gravel, who's in the audience here. She's basically asking that she be allowed to keep an Avion, is it called?
Yeah.
Yeah, Avion trailer on pad number eight. And, uh, I'm wondering if the administrator has any comment on this email?
Um, the only comment that I have is similar to what was previously communicated. It's our understanding that a portion of pad eight is village property, based on surveying that we had done previously in twenty eleven. So thus, in following with bylaw and bylaw enforcement, we would say no unless directed by council. But staff would take it based on current policy that it should not be located on top of village property. If it was completely and totally within the private person's property and it could be confirmed that that was such, we would have no reason to do anything.
And, and I'm assuming there's setback requirements from the property line or?
Well, it's, uh, the problem is because it's a trailer, it's not a fixed and placed structure, not connected to municipal services or water or anything like that. So the setback requirements wouldn't really apply. The big thing, um, that would be different if it was like an accessory building or a trailer or something like that, but it doesn't really apply so much of being a trailer.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, if there's an intention that it be connected to utilities in the future? And I think, I think, uh, if it's not going to be connected to utilities, I can understand where you're coming from, but if it is going to be connected to utilities, there's always the potential, I think, that it could be turned into an additional residence or, uh, occupied as a rental. And I, I don't know if that's a problem.
That, that is a problem because it's not a license, it's, uh, we have some other issues in other places in the community where, uh, that has been an issue for decades and it's rearing its head now. Changes need to be made to the Trailer Park bylaw from nineteen ninety-one, like, something like that needs to be looked at because there, there, there is a demand for people to reside in RVs, but it has to be properly controlled so that it's done safely. And that provision isn't within our existing bylaws, so right now it's just, it shouldn't exist.
So would it be appropriate to consider a motion to allow the Avion trailer to, uh, remain on pad eight, subject to it being located entirely within the confines of the Trailer Park? And that it not be connected to, uh, utilities without previously being approved by council? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah.
If that's appropriate, then I so move.
I'll second that. Just for discussion.
Counselor Peters?
Is there survey markers that can, that there can be some delineation as to where it can actually sit?
Um, I haven't looked for, I haven't looked for the survey marker myself. We do have a survey record for the area from twenty eleven, but I, I don't know where they are or if the markers are still where they are, it would likely have to, at least a part of it, be resurveyed to confirm.
Because my concern is if any part of it is on village property and something happens, then the village retains that liability.
Right, right.
So, you know, if the, the unit was not attached to utilities and was in whole on that property, then I support the motion, but it's not, that's not possible.
That was my attention.
That's not possible, then, then I, I would support the motion at this time until such time as we could, um, confirm that it is no longer on village property. So that's kind of my concern.
Counselor Ranta?
Well, I'm comfortable supporting the motion and I think we've made a clear in the motion that we don't, we want whose property it would be on. And that, that would be something that administration would be responsible to ensure that the property is a village property.
Yeah.
Because in the motion it says the location would be on the property of the Trailer Park.
Right, right. And I think the, the survey probably has feet and inches of where the village's property is and so take measure might solve the problem about whether or not it's on village property.
Take measure, metal detector, depends what kind of posts they're on, where they are, that sort of thing.
Yeah. Counselor Dubois?
Um, I understand and I appreciate in the short term that moving the trailer provided it's all village property is something to do in the short term. Uh, I don't think it answers the question in the long term. I would say that, um, I would be comfortable leaving status quo once they move it off of village property, if it's properly surveyed, but I would like to see some sort of a very specific timeframe for this issue to come back to council to ensure that we are, have the opportunity to comment on it. We have a chance to review our bylaw, to see what our bylaw states, as well as have the opportunity to determine what the usage is going to be and what the limitations would be on that. Is it available just for occupancy as an office? Is it connected to utilities, is it going to be connected to utilities? Does it need any kind of building permit to be installed? All those types of questions, I don't see enough information in here to be able to make any kind of a decision past that. So I'm reluctant to support the motion unless we have a timeframe to say that it has to be moved within a certain timeframe and it's only allowed to stay there for an appropriate amount of time for Ms. Gravel to bring that back to council to review.
And are you suggesting an amendment?
I'm making my comment. I'm discussing it.
Well, um, the, the motion is to approve the, uh, the Avion trailer staying on pad number eight, subject to it being entirely confined within the property boundaries of the, uh, Mobile Home Park and that it not be connected to utilities without prior approval of council.
But to me, that's no different than having somebody store an RV on their property, they're allowed to do that within the property. The question then becomes what's the usage of it going to be? If it's going to become an office, is that an occupied structure at that point? How does that trigger within the, the bylaw what that usage is? It's different than storing it there versus using it as an office, potentially to use it as occupancy for residents, et cetera.
Any comment, Administrator Couture?
Yeah, the big thing, the big thing that it comes down to is occupancy. If it's going to be used for occupancy in any way, shape or form, all the bylaws apply and it has to be treated like a structure. If it's simply being used for stor-, like, storing it on property, there's, everybody in town has a trailer that they store on property somewhere, um, and then it's not an issue. So, uh, that would be the big thing to either review bylaws and find or confirm and seek that information if needed. But, um, that's where, that's basically our line on the administrative and bylaw side is if, um, if it's being used as a residence in some capacity, even a temporary residence overnight or something like that, it's, it, all the rules of the bylaws apply. It's not just for storage at that point, so that's when it gets a little muddier and we have to start having more in-depth conversations.
Counselor Peters?
So does an office constitute occupation?
We haven't sought a legal opinion on that, but.
Because our way to maybe help that in this particular circumstance might be to, um, add to the motion, and I'm not, I'm just, this is discussion, add to the motion that at no time that it be used for overnight stay, that it be simply used for an office. We're, we're kind of dealing with an individual incidence and that's, it's, to make up, um, a set decision on it is something we don't want to be bound to forever, I guess is where I'm going is, we need to make sure that we.
In, in my mind, sorry.
Counselor Ranta, I think you were there.
Uh, I, I would support that as a, an amendment to include that it not, that it be used for an office, yeah. Because I don't think the word office is in the motion.
No, it's not in the motion.
But it says that it will not be used as a residence.
It's in the email.
Because, and I'll take somewhere, maybe somebody wants a second to first, but I'll, I'll discuss that if it gets submitted.
On the amendment to, that it only be allowed to be used as an office?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Ranta?
Um, my discretion on it is that I think it's very been hard of Chloe Gravel to bring this forward to council because so many, uh, so many times this occurs in the community and, and, and it's just done and not brought to council and not asked permission for. And, uh, I think we're being very clear in the motion, what we as governors expect. And I think it, it would be up to the administration to, to take it from there and ensure that, that that's what goes on and if it's on the right piece of property at the right place and that sort of thing. I, I think it's commendable that this is in writing to a council meeting. Um, I, I can bring numerous examples around the community where, where, um, trailers are on village property and being used as residences, um, from time to time. And I think it's, it's, it's upon us to, to consider each one and, you know, used as an office, I think it's, it's, it's an exception, but that's what council's here for, is, is to consider exceptions that help people and I would like to help this situation.
Thank you, Counselor Dubois.
I guess I'm still concerned about the timing of this. I don't think that this is sort of a permanent solution. I think putting a trailer in that situation is not designed to be a permanent. Trailers are designed, travel trailers are designed to be movable, they're not designed to be long-term occupied buildings. So I think we have to be quite aware of the precedent that we're setting when it comes to this. In general, I'm not in favor of using, uh, travel trailers, et cetera, as permanent residences within our community. We already know that there's issues with water and sewer and all those types of things. How are we going to deal with that? How do we deal with that, those requirements for infrastructure? I would be, like to make a motion that we amend the.
We've got an amendment on the floor.
Yeah, amend that to, that Ms. Gravel bring the issue back to us within a six-month timeframe for us to confirm what the status is, what her plan is, with some more details around what is the map of the current layout of the park with where the, the homes are currently located, what are the current regulations for the density of manufactured home parks, all those sorts of questions, because I just, I don't have enough information to provide a long-term answer to this question. My motion would be to limit it, limit for the use of an office for six months.
Thank you, is there a second here?
Oh.
This is the second amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion on the second amendment, Counselor Peters?
I, I have, this question is for, um, through the chair for council, or CIO Couture. When that particular lot is taken, the village portion of it is taken away and the fifth wheel is on a specific amount of property, is it a sufficient amount of property to be used for anything other than having that?
Um, your.
Would you be able to put a, a mobile home?
Like if you included, sorry, I'm just not quite sure.
If you take away the, the village portion of the property that it's now on, is that lot that's left sufficient to?
I couldn't say, I, I haven't looked at that, so I couldn't tell you. I'm not sure what, yeah, I'm not sure what current sizes are, I'd have to look at setbacks and that sort of thing. Yeah, it'd be hard to say.
So on the second amendment, which was to provide a six-month timeframe for the approval? Any further discussion on the second amendment, Counselor Ranta?
Just on this second amendment, uh, I understand that the second amendment is about having kind of a timeframe, a six-month timeframe, just, just to ensure kind of, we're very diligent about this, this issue. Would that not be more of an administrative, um, task to, if, if something wasn't right, then it would be brought back to council? Or is that something you need to put in the motion?
It, it, it's a perfectly legal and legitimate amendment at this point and it would be up to administration to give force and effect to the amendment if it passes. So the amendment, second amendment is six-month timeframe? Any further discussion?
One question, is this a lauded trailer lot itself? Like, is it actually a trailer lot? Minus, or, or.
It's, I, I haven't looked into it in detail to give you a full answer, but. My understanding is it is currently, uh, because that comes down to zoning. It is currently zoned as a C-one property, which is not actually a trailer park, but it was as a trailer park before that zoning was put in place, so its grandfathered into zoning. So that makes it really muddy too, right? Because it's, technically, the zoning and use for that property is supposed to be commercial, commercial use. So, um, future changes aside are supposed to be commercial use.
But one could consider it, uh, legal non-conforming at this point? Because it's there before the C-one zone was put in place.
But anything that's non-conforming, if, like, say for example, uh, if a pad was previously occupied and then it was no longer occupied for a period of time, that lasted after six months. So if there was nothing on it, it's not considered that anymore. So it, it's messy, right? It's a messy situation.
Yeah, so we've got the second amendment on the floor, duly seconded. Any further discussion, which is the six-month timeline? All those in favor, opposed, carried? And the first amendment, I can't even remember what that was anymore.
The first amendment was, uh, to change it to add overnight, to no overnight stays.
Okay.
In language terms.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. On the first amendment then, uh, that there be no, uh, uh, use of the trailer as a overnight occupied building? Any further discussion on that one? All those in favor, opposed, carried? On the motion as amendment, as amended, amended again.
Do you want to know what you're voting on?
No, I made it up.
It would read that council approved the trailer remaining on pad eight and that it not be connected to utilities until approval is sought from council under the condition that the trailer is not used for overnight stays. And then the six-month timeframe might just abbreviate it, so adding.
There is no, it doesn't say anything about.
Yeah, it needs to include.
Yeah, I'll have to, yeah.
You'll have to tweak that a little bit.
Yeah. It's not exactly as you worded it, you did word it nicely.
Oh, you're very kind. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. So, uh, that takes us to the end of the printed part of the agenda, is there any new business? Seeing none, any questions from the public?
Uh, yes, or press.
Yeah, you're the press, that comes next.
Are you?
Any questions from the public? Yes, sir.
The, the outside on Court Road, just by Cashmere.
Please state your name.
It's Paul Attle. It's Paul Attle.
Thank you.
The sign that says no trucks, is that sign big enough?
On Collins Road? Or where, whereabouts?
Where you access Quartz Road from Highway One. Just by Cash Creek.
Quartz Road from Highway One.
Heading north.
You're meaning like in front of the fire hall? Like you, you turn in from Highway One onto Quartz Road?
There's a clear sign there saying no trucks.
Yeah. Jiggly, remember that sign.
Yeah, nobody observes that.
Yeah, I don't recall that one, I'm sorry.
It must have been there.
It must have been quite small.
No, it's well. Well, it's there.
Yeah.
Okay, now. Nobody stops at that intersection, but by the community center. Um, oh, okay, you're, you're must be the only one. There's, there's something on the books with, um, the police, uh, item called a rolling stop. That's a hundred dollar fine. When I walk to and from the post office, I haven't seen a vehicle stopped there. Now, if I heard comments from the people with scooters, they're afraid to use that crossing. Because the vehicles try to run them down.
Yeah. Yeah, I've noticed there are quite a few vehicles, I think mostly people from out of town, that either coming from the north, they don't even almost slow down going around, around the corner there. They obviously stop at the highway because they're afraid of getting hit. But, uh, there, it is a problematic situation with the number of people that run that stop sign. And, uh, same thing going towards the north. They slow down a little bit more, I think, to go around the corner to the left there, but, uh, often they don't stop. Most of us who live here stop there and, and, uh, same thing going both ways. But, uh, I don't know what the solution to that would be. We've certainly been in touch with the RCMP about it in the past, and they have sat near the community hall and chased down people that don't stop. And, uh, I don't know if that's something we need to do again, is, uh, contact the RCMP again and ask them to, uh, focus on that situation.
Well, the community's put in the camera to record this.
I know the RCMP, I'm sitting there, just in school hours. But it's not something they can do 24/7, unfortunately, so they, they were taking people this past fall, I saw them a number of times.
Yeah, me too, yeah.
Moving down Quartz Road to the machine shop. They're not following the rules when it comes to equipment on the road and loading and loading trucks. Workman's compensation required you to put a barricade up there whenever you're loading a vehicle. The only people I've seen that do that is BC Hydro. One of the people, um, before Christmas was clearing snow with a forklift. That forklift was not licensed to be on the highway.
Whose forklift was it?
The machine shop's. He, he put a plow on the front of his thing, of his forklift, and was cleaning snow.
Well, that would be a matter for the RCMP to enforce.
Yeah. What do you do off the sidewalk when you don't barricade and they're loading trucks?
Well, I'm, I'm not familiar with the problem.
Well, it's a safety issue. It's a, um, work safe PC issue. If, if you're loading a truck and you're using equipment, you have to isolate the sidewalk from the activity. Because somebody could come through there, get run over by the forklift, especially if it was on a scooter.
Administrator Cochere, do you have any comment on that? Have you seen that happening or?
I haven't seen it myself. I know the road's quite busy with work coming and going from the machine shop. But, uh, I do see traffic coming through all the time, but I don't pay attention when they're loading or unloading, it's a little out of the way. But, uh, if, if you are observing it, um, I would recommend, uh, if it is a work safe issue, uh, and you're seeing it in the moment, I would recommend informing them, because they'd want to be aware of it, because they're the one that has the power to enforce something like that. If it is something that, uh, we're seeing and we're aware of it, I would reach out to them, like whenever we see somebody that's not compliant with work safe, we would inform them. But if I'm not seeing it in the moment, I don't have a lot of ability to, um, to do anything about it, right? Also, um, uh, I don't know if you've, uh, mentioned to them in the past that it's an issue, like with the machine shop directly, because it could just be a staff training thing, or they aren't aware that it's an issue, because I know that there's been a few times, um, with different businesses in the area that weren't sure of bylaws or business licensing, that sort of thing. So when we noticed it, we just politely mentioned to them the issue and they were happy to go into compliance. They just weren't aware of the issue.
There's issues in the past that has been, some part of the court, um, legislation, they had to keep those doors closed, especially when their air are gouging. You can get a painful eye injury from that bright light. They're not supposed to expose, supposed to put screens around activities like that. They don't. Is that, um, commercial or industrial, the zoning of that?
It's commercial as far as I know.
Yeah.
Well, that's industrial work they're doing, heavy industrial.
I believe that that facility has been there since before it was owned commercially. Before zoning was a thing in the community, but it's been here so long.
It's been there.
The machine shop has been there since the seventies. It predates all our bylaws.
Yeah, that address is on Highway ninety-seven, so they're using the back door as access. Well, on the, um, assessment, it's identified as Highway ninety-seven as the address.
The address of the machine shop?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So what I see in the problem, excuse me. What I see the problem is, if you see going on, you have to go discuss it with them. You don't get a proper answer, or no UCB, if it's public safety. We can comment on it from our point of view, but that's all we can do.
Yeah, I guess I should, um, create a, a photo diary of all of the issues that are non-compliant to.
If you go to the UCB, and photos, dates, everything, it has to be all down to them. I know where you're coming from.
Yeah.
You're the one that industry, but, uh, that's a proper job.
And they keep blocking my driveway.
Yeah, because I'm not sure whether they're going to move that, or block it over your driveway.
Yeah, they, they shouldn't be blocking your driveway or the roadway. Um, so if something like that's happening, um, the first step would be to inform them direct, and if you're not getting compliance and they continue to do it, then inform us.
Well, it's not really done with the trucks.
But it's still, yeah, it's still for their business, so they're still responsible for that, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public?
No.
Questions from the press?
Yes. All right, I have many. Um, it's, this, forgive me, these are from the top of my head while attending this meeting. I hope that's permissible.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay. Uh, it sounds as though this gentleman has brought forth, forth issues for those with disabilities. Um, where are we with the disability easy accessibility committee?
Uh, I think that's been assigned to, uh, an existing committee of the village of Cash Creek.
Okay.
Which is the, uh, healthcare and protective services committee. So they will be looking at establishing an accessibility committee as part of their responsibilities.
Okay, would that, would something like this be able to be brought forth to that committee for them to, um, speak on behalf of the residents who are worried for their own sa- for their safety?
That would be up to the committee.
Okay. All righty. Uh, I was also incredibly curious about the, regarding the RV. I understand that there's, um, the Avion trailer on pad eight. I understand that personal property is a priority, but a, a lot of RVs are, people residing in RVs are to combat homelessness, to prevent homelessness. Is stop, is making it only office space and only, and like not able to reside within an RV in adding another person to the homeless list?
Well, it's not presently occupied to the best of my knowledge.
Of course.
Just go ahead, Chloe.
Okay. Uh, I got some, um, I've got an article regarding, uh, trailers in mobile home parks. I don't know if I sent this to you or not, did I?
I never got it.
Okay, well, I'm going to leave these with you.
Thank you. Just provide them to the administrator.
The Avion is, has been pulled forward off of the city property, so it's on my property. And I've got storage for till the end of March on it. It's not hooked up to anything. So, number eight used to have a double wide on it. And it was on the village property twelve feet, as you know. So that was taken out by the flood. We removed it and that was it. So it is an existing pad, even though, uh, um, you know, I understand what you're saying, but it's still a pad eight with all the hookups. And that's where that stands right now. It's, it's off the village property. And I'm totally, I've also got a survey. So if anybody wants to come over and we'll go over the, you know, the measurements, I'm, I'm more than willing to do that. I'd like to do that. Now, as far as an office is concerned, I, I am going to apply to hook it up. So that when I come to Cash Creek, I can at least stay there overnight. So that's where that stands right now. I'll, I'll be putting in an application to have it hooked up to the services. Like there was an electrical, there is a sewer, there's everything there now. As far as the, uh, does the, uh, CAD space goes, on one side is village up to the Cash Creek, or the Caribou Road. And on one side, it's, it's the legal twenty feet from the one trailer to the, to the Avion. The other side, there's nothing. So it's kind of, uh, I would say legal as far as that's concerned. If I'm allowed to keep it there. I guess that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think the motion that was passed, uh, doesn't, uh, permit you to, uh, hook it up to services.
No, that's right.
So, uh, you know, sometime during the next six months or something, if that's what you want to do.
I'll, I'll apply. Sure, I can apply for it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions from the press?
Yes. I early, mentioned, mentioned earlier was, um, uh, the deficiency of young people who were, who didn't qualify for summer student positions. I was just wondering what those deficiencies were.
Administrator Cochere?
It wasn't so much that there were deficiencies in people applying, it's that we didn't receive applications. There's just not, there's a, uh, I probably worded incorrectly, um, just between, uh, us and other organizations and us being the service industry. That time of year in the summer, when we're looking for people, everybody's looking for people, so there's just not enough, uh, people that are within that age range, that are looking for work that aren't already hired somewhere else. Where there's a hundred jobs and only thirty people to fill them is kind of what we've noticed, based on pretty personal experience. There's, that time of year, it's always difficult to get young people.
Okay. Um, I understand that, uh, building relationships between indigenous communities and villages near each other because they are residing nearby. Uh, have you ever considered, um, posting, um, like job postings at a local band office or First Nation?
Uh, we haven't here with the village, we haven't. Um, it's definitely something we can look at in the future, and thank you for the suggestion, because it is good luck.
Yeah, you're welcome.
But, yeah, um, I know previously we have posted, um, with cases, but we never thought that, I've never thought of the actual band offices themselves.
Of course. All righty. And, um, what is, I, I understand that, um, it, it sounds as though, correct me if I'm wrong, that, um, RVs being permanent residents is a decade-old issue. How come this has never been discussed before?
Well, uh, it probably has been discussed, but, uh, the bylaws haven't been amended and there are actually some, uh, RVs that are presently being occupied, whether legally or illegally, and, uh, that hasn't been pursued by, uh, staff or council.
Okay. Uh, has there, yes. Where is affordable housing in Cash Creek?
Wherever you can find it.
Yeah?
Well, um, I, I would suggest that, uh, the most affordable housing is probably in the mobile home parks, and we have several in the village of Cash Creek. There may be some basement suites, whether legal or illegal, uh, that also might be considered affordable housing. But, uh, there's not an abundant supply of affordable housing, other than the trailer parks.
Okay.
Can I make a comment on that, please?
No.
I'd like to address that question as far as.
Part of no, don't you understand?
None. Um, as a mobile home park owner and as an owner of a park in Cholak in the past, I've found that travel trailers generally don't fit in with mobile homes. And that's why people, you know, people own their own, own trailers, keep it up, all of that, plant flowers, all of that, and make them their home. When you start adding travel trailers, I'm talking twenty-eight feet or third, you know, that type of trailer, and they're movable, generally, uh, doesn't really suit a mobile home park. After all, they, they are a village to live in, a little, you know, community, and people take great pride in, in their homes. And that's really my comment. A- as far as homeless goes, I don't know anything about that, and so I can't comment, comment on that. I hope that kind of clears it up.
To correct myself, living in an RV isn't actually competent, it, like, the income of someone who lives in an RV isn't guaranteed.
Well, that's exactly right. And of course, tiny homes are now extremely popular. We have a friend that's got one that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's great.
Counselor Dubois?
I think this is a great discussion, perhaps the press and Ms. Gravel could take it offline outside of the meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, of course.
Questions from the press?
All righty. Uh, what, has there, has it ever been brought forth for eco, like eco-initiatives to bring a cooler environment? initiatives to bring a cooler environment, because there is scientific evidence of a rising temperature in British Columbia, which is what caused a lot of forest fires, and being in a senior, and being in an elderly dominant, um, long distance for kids to go to school and the bus stop, what is being done to keep our sidewalks cool?
Absolutely nothing.
Will anything ever be done?
Um, I am not aware of an initiative that is suggesting that we somehow cool the sidewalks or, uh, provide a cooler environment.
Forgive my mis, miswording, but there, there are studies from the David Suzuki Foundation to make a climate within, for example, a village cooler, so that heat domes, which caused a lot of death for seniors, um, it's actually preventable, what's being done?
Absolutely nothing, Councilor Dubois?
Actually, we have been looking within the village to do a lot more greening, that's why we're looking at doing planters, that's how we planted trees, is to help mitigate the effects of the asphalt going out and everything like that, so we are looking at doing that, and we are doing that, but it's all on an informal basis, it's not part of a larger plan.
Councilor Peters?
The Chair, we are also limited by financial capabilities, so we are a small community with a very small tax base, and so those initiatives to take on anything really big, what we can do is planting those kinds of things and make sure that our buildings are as economically, um, taken care of, that way, we just in the last meeting approved a, a replacement of all of our streetlights with LED lights to reduce the amount of, pardon me, amount of energy use, so we are taking the steps that we are capable of taking at this time.
Of course, um, has it ever been, has a committee ever been discussed, has there ever been research on grant, grants that allow this, these, um, this?
For cooling the community?
Yeah, literally.
And grant for a dome over the community and put air conditioning in it? Um, I don't think it's been discussed in the past.
Okay, I, thank you, I appreciate your responses.
Thank you for the questions, any further questions from the press?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Councilor Dubois.
I just, which organization are you with?
Uh, I'm actually with Valley Deuce Channel, where, yeah.
We do have need of a closed session, uh, and I would ask for a motion to move to closed session pursuant to section ninety-one and ninety-one point two of the community charter.
So, no?
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you, there'll be a brief break.